Thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Aubriana, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Mansfield.
Nichols.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Black.
Here, thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you'd remain standing for a invocation, which will be offered by Rabbi Sarah Goodman representing Temple Emmanuel Pocatello.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather here today, we remember to appreciate and to be grateful for both the opportunities and the challenges brought before this council today. May they listen to the community with an open mind without judgment, helping our community with fairness and without bias. May this council be guided by wisdom, patience, and creativity, working together to meet the needs of all members of our community regardless of age, gender, religious or ethnic backgrounds, or economic or social status. May they have both the knowledge and perspective to know when to stand firm and the humility to know when compromise or change is needed. Because this council is the artery pumping life into the heart of our beloved community, those of us living in it are grateful to you and we put our faith and our trust in you, no pressure, to keep that heart healthy and strong.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: clarification and regular council meetings of May 16, 2024, and special city council meetings of August 20 and August 27, 2024. B, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of August 15 through 31, 2024. C, treasurer's report. Council may wish to approve the treasurer's report for July 2024 showing cash and investments as of July 31, 2024. D, Americans with Disabilities Act grievance committee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Dr. Roger Bowe to continue serving as a member of the ADA grievance committee. Dr. Bowe's term will begin September 16, 2024, and expire September 16, 2026. E, Historic Preservation Commission appointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Christopher Boltman and Caitlin Blanco to serve as members of the Historic Preservation Commission, replacing Renee Parker, who resigned, and Josh Pullman, whose term expired. Christopher's term will begin September 6, 2024, and will expire September 6, 2027. Caitlin's term will begin September 5, 2024, and expire September 5, 2027. F, Planning and Zoning Commission appointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Benjamin Gomez, Annie Mendoza and Desiree To serve as members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, replacing Roger Frye, Whitney Finwick, and Crystal Chanda, who resigned. Benjamin's term will begin September 6, 2024, and expire August 5, 2025. Annie's term will begin September 6, 2024, and expire November 6, 2028. Desiree's term will begin September 6, 2024, and expire April 17, 2027.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we accept the consent agenda or approve the consent agenda as outlined in agenda item number three, items A through F.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Council Member Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Mingo?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four is proclamations. We have four proclamations tonight. They will be read in this order. Recovery Month, Council President Lurick will read that. Service Dog Month, Council Member Mingo will read that. And Kind Community Week, Council Member Nichols will read that.
Whereas the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration celebrates the 35th anniversary of National Recovery Month this year, marking over three decades of spreading the message that treatment is effective and people can do, people can and do recover every day. And whereas recovery from mental and substance use disorder, including co-occurring disorders, is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness. And whereas treatment and recovery services for mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is effective and people can and do recover in our area and across the nation. And whereas addressing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and encourage those in need of help to seek appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas to help more people with lived experience achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and Recovery Fest invite all residents of the Pocatello area to participate in National Recovery Month activities at Lookout Point September 13 from 5 to 8 p.m. Now therefore, I Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 to be National Recovery Month in Pocatello, and call upon the people of Pocatello to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting the theme "Hope is Real, Recovery is Real, With Home, Health, Community, and Purpose."
All right. I am Joanne Martinez, and I am here to thank you guys and thank Mayor and city council members and community of Pocatello for supporting Recovery Fest. It's important to recognize that people can and do recover from substance use and mental health issues. It's important for people to reach out and know that it's okay to ask for help. Community members can really help let people feel accepted and know that it's okay to reach out and get some services and some help. And that encourages growth in our people, in our community, and our agencies and everything in Pocatello. Family, friends, peers, everybody plays a role in someone's recovery. Social inclusion, not isolation, is really important for recovery. Therefore, that's why we do Recovery Fest every year, and it's been a great event this year. Like you said, it's going to be September 13, Lookout Point, from 5 to 8 p.m. We're going to have Almost Famous there. They're a band. They're going to play some music. We're going to have Lamb Weston. They're going to provide some free food. There's many, many agencies in our community, from Chubak, Pocatello, from Idaho Falls, that'll come down and share recovery resources that are available for youth, adults, and families. So really encourage everybody to come, even if you just come for a few minutes and stop by. It's really fun, and hopefully it'll be a nice day. So appreciate everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A proclamation. Whereas in the United States, 64 million adults and children have a disability, and only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide. And whereas the need for specially trained service dogs for individuals with disabilities is growing, and whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships, and whereas Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence by providing training, ongoing follow-up services, and community support. And whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate the community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. And whereas the city of Pocatello continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, including citizens with service dogs, are welcomed. Now therefore, I Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, in recognition of service dogs and adults and children with disabilities, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 to be National Service Dog Month in the city of Pocatello, and encourage all citizens to celebrate service dogs and show respect for the rights afforded to the adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of the assistance of service dogs.
Thank you. Do you want a picture? Sure. Would you like to say a few words?
I do. This is Pip, and she is my service dog for to help me hear and alert me to sound. Without my hearing aids, I hear nothing. So she had, I've had her for four months, and she came with two and a half years of training by a nonprofit organization, and I took two weeks of training to be her handler. And she's alerting me to something, so I'm not sure what she's alerting me to, if someone's phone is going off or someone's calling my name. But she's really good. She's made a difference in my life, and not very many people know about the service dog. So I encourage people to check out the Canine Companions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Proclamation. Whereas bullying, negativity, intolerance, and hate can happen to children and adults alike at any time, whether it's at school, work, online, or in the community. And whereas these issues threaten the physical and emotional safety of the citizens in our cities and in our country. And whereas various committees, groups, and individuals have come together to instead create positive empowering experiences for our youth and adults by teaching and promoting kindness as a way of life. And whereas kindness, the quality of being friendly, generous, and considerate, can go a long way towards making our schools, neighborhoods, communities, and our world better places. And whereas we all have a choice every day to show kindness to others, both in our thoughts and our actions, to teach the value of being kind-hearted, to be role models for kindness, and to stand up and say kindness matters in Pocatello, Chubak, and Bennett County. Now therefore, I Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim September 16 through 20 to be Kind Community Week in Pocatello and Chubak, and encourage our citizens to be more than bystanders when it comes to kindness. Make the choice every day to be kind and integrate kindness into your daily lives.
Are we going right here? Do you want to go over here? Let's go right here. Now if we come over here, that means you go over there. If you'd like to say something, you're definitely welcome.
So on behalf of the entire Board of Directors for Kind Community, I want to thank Mayor Blatt, the city council, and the community for recognizing Kind Week, which is now in its ninth year. We also want to extend a special thank you to Mayor Blatt for inviting us to be part of your mental health initiative and for the positive impacts that that's making in the community.
Thank you.
We hope you'll join us for the many things that we have planned for Kind Week, starting on Monday, September 16, with our kickoff event from 5 to 8 at Lookout Point. Everybody kind of is familiar with that. On Tuesday, we have tee it up for kindness at the Outback Golf Club, where the first hundred buckets of balls or mini golf are free. On Wednesday, we're excited to have TED Talk speaker Tanner Clark speaking to the community for a community presentation. He's going to be out at the schools that week. We're really excited to bring the speakers back into the schools. We think that's really what Kind Week is all about. But we have a community presentation that's open to the public that will be at Century High School on Wednesday, September 18, from 6 to 7 p.m. On Thursday, join us at School District 25's admin offices for a Kind Community Conversation, which is behind the screen, where there will be some experts talking about how to protect your child from online dangers. And then we wrap up the week on Saturday with Healthy City USA's Yoga at the Port from 8 to 9 a.m., and Kindness is Free at Zoo Idaho from 12 to 4 p.m. Again, on behalf of the entire Board of Directors, we want to thank all of you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move to agenda item number five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On September 12, 9 a.m. will be a city council work session. September 19, 5:30 p.m. will be a council clarification meeting. 6 p.m. will be a regular council meeting. Other events: September 7, September Bear, sorry, September Bear Family Fest at Zoo Idaho from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. September 8 is Grandparents' Day at Zoo Idaho. Grandparents will receive 50% off admission when accompanied by a paid child. September 14, Ross Park Rendezvous Fun Run at 8 a.m. Contact Parks and Recreation Department for more information. Zoo Idaho will be open on weekends only, September 7 through October 27. Open burn ban in wildland urban interface areas continues. We'll move to agenda item six, Taxicab License Denial Appeal. Doris, Adam Doris will be present to appeal his taxicab license denial, which was denied by the Pocatello Police Department. Madam. Here, I'll go ahead and hand them out. Thank you.
So before you is my gold seal from the state of Idaho. I am attempting to get my taxi driver's license as a form of secondary income. I was originally charged in 2019, or I'm sorry, 2009. When I was 19, I had sexual intercourse with a young female. I have since completed my time. As of November will be one year. I just want an opportunity to try and prove I'm not that person anymore, and I would like to do something different.
Okay. Questions for Adam? Council Member Mingo?
So with the charge that you were convicted of, was there, has there been any attempt? I appreciate this, right? Has there been any attempt to have that expunged or?
No. Due to my inability to follow probation, I lost my right to withheld judgment.
So is that prior to the offense or?
It was part of the plea deal that I took, was if I could complete probation, I got the withheld judgment. I was unable to complete probation, therefore I had to go do my time. So I don't have the option of a withheld judgment anymore, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. And so I apologize for diving off into your business, but what prohibited you from completing probation?
A lot of it was immaturity, a lot of it being 19, 20 years old, trying to go out and think that I can still do all these things and get away with it. And since then, obviously, you know, you learn that's not the case.
So this is my last follow-up. How many probation violations did you have? Because usually a probation officer will give you a couple chances. So if you were unable to complete it, what led to this uncompletion?
I had five violations, and they were being out past curfew, leaving jurisdiction without approval, not having a 40-hour work week job, unapproved relationship, being around my minor nephews, who have nothing to do with my crime. But I do accept and acknowledge the fact that it is part of probation parole. Can't do that kind of stuff. I again accept that.
Any other questions for Adam? Okay, see and none. Thank you. Don't go far. We'll have Mallory come up.
Good evening. Mallory Bascom, Pocatello Police Department, Licensing Enforcement. I denied Mr. Doris's application for a taxi license in accordance with City Code 5.56.050 Subsection E, which states that applicants must have a criminal record free from conviction for any felony or for any crimes involving moral perpetuity or violence or possession or sale of any controlled substances. In October of 2012, Mr. Doris was convicted of felony statutory rape for an incident that occurred in the summer of 2009, at which time he was 19 years of age, and according to the report, the victim was 14 years of age. Also, according to the report, alcohol was involved. As a result of the conviction, it appears that Mr. Doris is required to register as a sex offender. I conducted a check of the Idaho Sex Offender Registry and found that he is in compliance with his registration at this time. That's all the information I have at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So at this time, as we're reviewing the, he has a felony, we're only looking at the felony itself. We're not looking at the charge specific, but the felony specific?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for, how about, Council President?
And I just wanted to clarify, with certain types of offenses or charges, there is a number of years that, you know, if the crime goes past like 10 years, for example, then we take that into consideration, whether they're in that 10-year period or whether they're outside of it, if it's long enough ago, that that's kind of a mitigating circumstance. With a felony charge like this, is there any number of years that then?
In the code for some of our licensing requirements, it does. In the taxi code specifically, it just says any felony, and it does not put a duration of time on it, unfortunately.
Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, I'm going to give you one last chance to...
So I do want to bring up that that was 2009. Here it is, 2024. I'm now 34 years old. I've completed everything the state required me to do. Obviously, you heard I'm in compliance with everything. I've already got one job working for Virginia Transformers, and they also do a background check 10 years ago. I mean, if I'm going to work for a company like that, I would feel fairly safe. That's just my own opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions, counsel? Okay, thank you. Okay, counsel, this is before you?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I certainly appreciate the attempts, and I certainly appreciate the fact of a person owning up to their mistakes in life. But there are consequences, and I believe that this is one of those consequences that we have to eat for those circumstances. And so with that, I would move that we uphold the decision of the police department to deny the taxicab license for Adam Doris.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Mingo and a second by Lurick. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mingo?
Yes.
Dorit?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel for your work there. I'll set this here. Okay, thank you. We'll move then to agenda item number seven is a public hearing. Zoning and Future Land Use Map Amendment, 2806 South Fifth Avenue, Gate City Builders. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request from Gate City Builders, represented by Robert Husavolt of Sunrise Engineering, for a zoning and future land use map amendment to change the designation of property located at 2806 South Fifth Avenue on the city's future land use map from commercial C to mixed-use MU, and to rezone the subject property from commercial, general CG to residential, commercial, professional, RCP. I declare the public hearing opened. Counsel, has there been any ex parte communication on this? Okay, see and none. Then I would look for Robert. Do you?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
I'm sorry, Robert, you've got 10 minutes here.
Oh, that's fine. I'll take two, Mayor. Mayor and Counsel, it's a pretty straightforward application. We appreciate, first off, we appreciate all you guys do and your time that you dedicate to the city. So we're here tonight. The staff report is pretty thorough. I'm not going to add or take anything away from that. We feel like this is a good fit. We've worked closely with staff to find the correct zoning and designation. So more than anything, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about this request.
Okay. Brent?
So the intended use is multifamily?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Don't go far. We'll have staff up here in just a minute. Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jim Engle, C, Long Range Planner for the city. The request before you includes, one, a change in the designation of the property located at 2806 South Fifth on the city's future land use map from commercial to mixed-use, and, two, to rezone the subject property from CG to RCP. This property is currently developed with an abandoned single-family house. The area surrounding the subject property is experiencing increased development pressures, including the area transitioning from industrial to commercial and residential, being designated as a brownfield redevelopment study area, the construction of a 55-plus senior apartment building, in-progress development of a large townhome development along First Avenue, potential development of high-density apartment complex at the end of Fredericale, multifamily development along Barton Road, and the construction of the Maverick Gas Station at the Interstate Interchange. With multiple development projects occurring in this area, it is fitting to allow for a variety of uses that RCP would permit. A public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the evening of August 14, 2024, where they recommended approval of the application, finding the application meets the standards of approval as found in Pocatello City Code. Noticing for this public hearing has met all city and state requirements, and staff has not received any court and staff has not received any correspondence regarding the application. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Okay, counsel, questions? Okay, thank you, Jim. Has there been any correspondence that the council has not seen?
No.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, just a minute, Jim.
I didn't see any conditions in the packet?
There's four.
There was four? Oh, I must have overlooked them. So all conditions have been met?
They would apply with the approval if the council sees fit.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, has there been any correspondence that the council has not seen? Okay, then with that, I'd look for any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then I don't see a reason for you to come up and rebut something that hasn't happened. So with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this items before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item Seven as outlined with the conditions, as long as conditions are met.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Mingham and a second by Paulson. Abriana, could you please call the roll?
Mingham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eight, Public Hearing, Zoning and Future Land Use Map Amendment, 906 East Elm Street, Perm Properties LLC. This time has been set aside for counsel to hear comments from the public regarding a request from Emily Stark of Perm Properties LLC, represented by Stuart Ward of Dioptra LLC, for a zoning and future land map, land use map amendment to change the designation of property located at 906 East Elm Street on the city's future land use map from residential R to mixed use MU, and to rezone the subject property from residential medium density, single family RMS to residential, commercial, professional, RCP. I declare the public hearing open. Counsel, has there been any ex parte communication in regards to this public hearing? Okay, then I would look for the applicant. Stuart?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Stuart Ward with Dioptra, representing the applicant. This is a request to change the future land use map and rezone about a quarter acre parcel at the corner of Elm and Jefferson from medium density to residential, commercial, professional, and a mixed use designation. The property just to the west, on the other side of Jefferson, is currently mixed use and has a business. The whole corridor of Jefferson is essentially a mixed use corridor, even though it's not designated as such. And so we're just asking for this piece of property to kind of conform with surrounding uses formally. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Councilmember Nichols?
So if approved, what's your purpose for the property? Do you have?
The applicant plans to build an accessory structure on that property, just to the east of the existing duplex, that would have living quarters in it. So it'd be like a garage with a small living quarter in it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Steph?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, Jim Engle C., Long Range Planner. This request again includes, one, a change in the designation from the property located at 906 East Elm Street on the city's future land use map from residential to mixed use, and to rezone the property from RMS to RCP. This property is currently developed with a duplex. This corridor, the Jefferson corridor, includes a variety of residential densities and commercial uses. The city's comprehensive plan calls for increased density in key neighborhood centers, and that each neighborhood should provide a flexibility of housing options. Quote, "Create development standards that allow for neighborhood centers to provide safe and convenient access to daily goods and services to the neighborhoods, adopt incentives that encourage mixed use development and upper story housing in key neighborhood centers, and commercial cores where residents can live, work, and play in or near their own neighborhoods, and adopt incentives that encourage the development of affordable, missing middle, intergenerational, and mixed income housing, especially where key community services and transit options already exist." A public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the evening of August fourteenth, 2024, where they recommended approval of the application, finding the application meets the standards of approval as found in Pocatello City Code. Noticing for this public hearing has met all city and state requirements, and staff has not received any written correspondence regarding this application. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jim as he's up here? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, have we received any correspondence in your office?
No further correspondence.
Thank you. Then we'd look for applications supporting the, any testimony supporting the application? Any testimony uncommitted? Oh, supporting, come on up. We moved this along pretty quick, so.
Daphne Swasim, 265 Gilmore. What input will this have on the school, the children walking to and from? Very young children, under school age, playing out on the sidewalk? And I'm concerned about that. I think it's going to add to the traffic, the noise, and parking.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. She was definitely ahead of me on that one. Supporting, I think she's opposed to it. Supporting the application? Any uncommitted to the application? Okay, any more opposed to the application? Okay. Stuart, you want to talk to that? The impact on the neighborhood or the youth?
Yeah, I'll just address a couple of things. This, if you're familiar with this property, it was quite rundown about eighteen months ago or two years ago. And the applicant has cleaned it up really well and just made the property well thousand times better than it was. And I think with that, it increases the safety in the area. There's not so much junk as close to the sidewalk and everything. Traffic, the, there's not going to be much increase in traffic with an accessory structure with like a single bedroom dwelling in it. So there's going to be like a one person living in that if anybody lives there. And it's not going to increase noise, and parking is all off street. And that's a requirement of the city to have off street parking in that area. So hopefully that addresses those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this items before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President?
I move that we approve the zoning and future land use map amendment regarding the property at 906 East Elm Street on Perm Properties LLC, as outlined in Agenda Item Eight, as long as the four conditions that are required by staff have been met, I mean, required by code. Period.
Thank you. I'm glad you put that period on there. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Paulson. Abriana, could you please call the roll?
Lorik?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Mingham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Nine, Public Hearing, Repel of Title 15.20 Sign Code and Tax Amendment to Title 17 Zoning Regulations. This time has been set aside for counsel to hear comments from the public regarding the proposed repeal of Title 15.20 Sign Code and amendments to Title 17 Zoning Regulations. I declare the public hearing open. Counsel, has there been any ex parte? Oh, never mind. I'm on the wrong one?
We want him to talk to people.
There we go. Now I'm on the right one. Never mind, counsel. The public hearing's still open. Let's go with that. Then I would look for our applicant.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Jennifer Flynn, Assistant Planner with the City of Pocatello. I'm excited to be here with you tonight and appreciate your time, as well as everybody that's here to speak to the proposed sign code. So I've prepared a slideshow for everybody. We'll just go through it, and hopefully it will inform you of things that are important to this code and also provoke any questions that you might have. So just to begin with, we talk about the purpose of signs. And as you can see, we have, in the proposed code, we have a definition of what we're attempting to conduct with the sign code. But in general, you know, signs exist to advertise, instruct, warn, give visual cues, provide general information, and give directions. And so I think it's important just to keep in mind the whole purpose of signs and focus on that as we move forward. So some might ask why we're seeking these changes. And I would just let you know that I've been on the planning staff for about a year now. When I came onto the staff, sign code was being brought before council in a completely different version than what you'll see tonight. And the planning department has been working for about the last two years on rewriting sign code or providing a new, a new sign code for our ordinances. Our goals are to make code easier to understand, interpret, and implement, both for compliance and for less code enforcement. Code enforcement is just done by staff members. And so the simpler code is and the easier it is to interpret, the less we have to enforce, because hopefully it would be easier to follow. Businesses want more signage at their location, and currently, our sign code is quite complicated and dependent on which zone you're in, how many entrances you have, whether or not you are a multi-tenant business or not, all dictate and determine what kind of signage you're allowed. And so with this proposed code, we're making it much more simple. Electronic message centers, or EMCs, are the most common complaint that we get from residents regarding signage. And that's one reason that that topic has been tackled in this proposed code. We look to enhance the look of our city and reduce sign clutter. We also conducted a survey about a year and a half, two years ago, that reached out to residents of Pocatello and wanted their opinions about signs in addition to other things. And so as a result of those survey results, that kind of drove us towards the changes that we were going to make. And last, community leaders have asked us to address billboards and curfews of signs specifically, as well as code enforcement issues. And the last time I was here in front of you was in March, and we just looked for direction as far as what we were supposed to address in the sign code. And so, you know, we've moved through the process. We've seen the Planning and Zoning Commission twice, if not three times since then. And now we're here to you with the improved code. So just to specifically address outcomes from the Planning and Zoning Meeting, which was a public hearing in July, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that we endorse or provide version number one. So just to be clear, on the agenda this year or tonight is two versions of sign code. Version one would allow new off premise signs to be put up around the city. Version two would not allow off premise signs in the future. So Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that we suggest version one be endorsed, and also that the illumination curfew only apply to residential zones. So something we just wanted to address, a lot of the comments that we get from the public or that have come in have kind of said, you know, that we're trying to hurt local businesses, and these policies are bad for business. We've worked really hard within the planning department to be business friendly and to listen to businesses' needs and to provide what they're asking for in sign guidance, as well as just residents and community members. So I see the two as being mutually beneficial. So changes to proposed sign code that support local businesses. And I just, in my staff report, I have a list of all of the changes or kind of an overview of changes. However, we just thought we'd break them down kind of to address what we feel is supporting local businesses in particular versus residents. So signs that do not require a permit will include sign face changes and murals. There's an overall simplification of sign regulations, so it's easier to interpret and understand. Painted wall signs and window signs do not require a licensed sign contractor to install, but still require a permit. So if somebody wanted to install those on their own, they would be allowed to with this proposed code, whereas under the current code, they have to hire a licensed sign contractor. Temporary signs are now referred to as portable signs, and there's no proposed time limitation on these signs. In our current sign code, there's a lot of different windows of time that people are allowed to display temporary signs. And again, in an effort to make this easy to understand and to enforce, there are no time limits. We've created a master sign plan for multi-tenant properties. And the goal of that master plan is to make signage more consistent throughout a complex and to also help incentivize businesses to plan their signage so that it looks better and provides better aesthetics. And then building mounted signs get either fifteen percent or twenty percent allowance per elevation based on the zoning district. And so that's just our simple approach to figuring out how much signage each business will get. So I have a couple of sign code examples. And really, if you don't have your head in sign code every day, it's hard to really grasp what these changes might mean. So we just have a couple of businesses here in town. And really, the whole point of this is just to demonstrate that we're providing allowances for more signage that will increase the awareness of businesses in town. So as you can see on the slide, this is for the soccer complex. Under the current code, this building would be allowed five hundred and seventy-five square feet of building and ground signage, whereas under the proposed code that's in front of you, they'd be allowed just over twelve hundred square feet of wall mounted signage and a hundred and fifty-six of ground signage. This is an example that we've been interacting with the pain and spine specialists since I started. And really, this facility would like to be able to provide ample signage on their building. And because of the way their building is classified, they're only allowed thirty-two square feet of a directory sign and sixty-four square feet of a ground sign. And on a building that's so huge, that signage gets lost and is kind of pointless. And so just another example that under the proposed sign code, they'd be allowed just short of a thousand square feet and seventy-eight of the ground signs. short of 1,000 square feet and 78 of the ground signs. Plenty of other examples, just of businesses in various zones. Some of these have already gone through a hearing examiner and had the signs that were not allowed by code allowed through, being approved through the hearing examiner. And that's another thing that we're changing in this code, is there will no longer be a sign exception process. Folks will either go through a conditional use permit or a variance if, if signs aren't allowed in that zone at all. Again, this is a multi-tenant facility, and really just giving another example that there's ample signage offered based on existing buildings, what signs they already have, and the zone that they're in. So changes to the proposed sign code that support community needs, capping off, off-premises signs. Based on the survey that we circulated throughout the community, off-premise signs, or what could also be referred to as billboards, were a major area of concern for residents, and that's why we have tackled that in this sign code. We suggest implementing curfews for electronic message centers, and that curfew would be from 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., or the hours of operation, whichever is least restrictive. And it's important to note, businesses, just for example, like a hospital, are not going to fall under this code. Those are emergency services, and they don't have to adhere to those rules. A place like a hotel, they're going to be able to keep, keep the lights on on their sign because that's a 24-hour business. So if you're a 24-hour business, this code would allow for that signage to be left on. Another change that's being made in the code is that licenses may be revoked by the planning director and building official rather than city council. In our city code, it seems that it's standard for the directors to have that permission and, oops, sorry about that. And so we're just trying to make it consistent and standardized. We've improved circumstances for the removal of abandoned or neglected signs. And then, like I already mentioned, we'll be getting rid of the sign exception process. So aspects of code that have gotten the most attention by far are off-premise signs, AKA billboards, and the illumination curfew. And so it's important to note that any sign can be an off-premise sign. All that it means is that a sign is located at a location that the business is not located on. So if there's not a business on a parcel and there's a sign there for that business, that creates an off-premise sign. Billboards in particular have a certain set of standards that ha, they have to adhere to. So again, in version one of the proposed code, it allows for new off-premise signs in the future, following the standards that are outlined in 17.07.050. And version two of the proposed code does not allow for new off-premise signs. And I just want to make it very apparent that depend, regardless of which version is approved or moved forward with, nothing is going to happen to the existing billboards. Advertisements won't be taken down. These, these signs aren't going to be lost. It just, we will just know whether or not future billboards are allowed in areas that meet those standards. To outline the illumination standards, again, it's the curfew, and in our code, it states that all EMC signs shall not be illuminated between 11 and, 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., or the hours of operation, whichever is least restrictive. And I'll just put this side note in. I, I used the wrong terminology here, calling it a sunset period. However, if council was interested in implementing or moving forward with some type of a curfew, we encourage a delayed implementation of the curfew for EMCs, just to give businesses that time to adjust their contracts and things like that. So at least a year, dependent on, on what we decide would work best. Lastly, this is an image, kind of hard to see up on the map, but just want to, you know, provide the information that currently within our area of city impact, there are just shy of 100 billboards. And those billboards exist, you know, along the Yellowstone Corridor, out on the interstates, and in various places, mainly focused on commercial, general, industrial, and line industrial areas. So there are 80 of those billboards within Pocatello proper, and then 18 just outside of the city limits. And that concludes my presentation. If there stem for questions?
Questions, councilman? The council president and then council member Paulson.
I have a few questions here. One of the things that I have heard from a lot of people, and I think you touched on this, but I just want to make it really, really clear, with on-premise business signs, not off-premise, but just on-premise, my understanding of our new version is that it is less restrictive. But there's talk in the community from a lot of people and, and business owners that are saying we're being more restrictive with the new code. So I just want to clarify that point. It's, I think, and when I talk about restrictive, I'm talking about sign sizes, square footage, different types of signs, you know? All the different options. I'm seeing more options for business owners. Is that, would that be correct?
Yeah, I would say absolutely. We're offering the opportunity to put signage on all elevations of a building, so each side of a building, whereas right now, the most that it allows is for two sides of a building, and that's only in specific circumstances. There's, there is definitely a huge variety of signs that people can use. Oftentimes, it's wall signs or ground signs that they choose to use. But we have gotten rid of a lot of the restrictions and tried to make code simple so that people can do what they want to.
And I really appreciate the effort to make it simple because I think, I've been on the council almost seven years now, and this is, I don't know, maybe the fourth time we've dealt with this issue. And every time, I mean, it's just, it's controversial, it's difficult, everybody has their arguments and everything, and it's just a difficult thing. So I think to come up with something that is just user-friendly and straightforward and easy for everybody is, is a good thing, and I, I think that's our, all of our goal. I did have a question about pole signs. That's another thing that came up a lot in, in emails we've received and people that I've talked to. And if you could just talk a little bit about what those are and what changes we're making to pole signs?
Um, well, I would refer you to the table that's, and your numbers might be different, but once you're in the proposed code, and I just am running off of version one, the table is 17.0.50. And so that really outlines where we're allowing pole signs and where we're not allowing pole signs. And so, you know, at large, pole signs are not allowed in residential areas, which is pretty standard. In the RCP zone, we are not allowing pole signs. And really, where these guidelines come from has to do with the look and the feel of how we want our community to flow. And so pole signs, you know, are typically better suited for commercial, general areas or industrial areas, and so that's where we have allowed them. So the CC zone is typically like a downtown area, and just based on the historic standards, pole signs aren't typically encouraged in those areas, and that's why they're not allowed in the CC area. However, once you get down to CG, OPLI, and I, then pole signs are allowed, and it just depends on your street frontage.
Okay. My next question, and I should have asked this when I was asking about on-premise signs, but, but maybe in terms of pole signs and other things as well, those are a version of on-premise. Anyway, the effect on businesses that have existing signs, and I think you touched a little bit at the end of your presentation on that. I've also heard people talking about, you know, I'm going to have to redo all my signage when this passes, or if this passes, I should say. Is, is that the case? Does this code, I mean, if it's less restrictive, then don't, don't most existing signs fit within it? What effect will it have on business owners and especially people that just did new signage? Are they going to have to get rid of what they have?
Aside from the illumination standard, nothing will be retroactive, so it wouldn't impact anything that is currently permitted. So if somebody went through a signed permit application and it was authorized by the city, then that's considered legal. And so that, we, we wouldn't ask that people change that. The time that they'll change or have to conform to the new standards would, would be when they put in new signs or they build a new facility.
Okay. And then, sorry, I got a whole list here. You mentioned illumination. One of those previous times when we went through sign code changes, one of the things we spent a lot of time talking about was illuminated signs, and we all learned, you know, the word lumen and how to measure and what's a good level and, but I still hear, and, and we put like the maximum that electronic signs or lighted signs could be at in terms of the number of lumens, and, and we had measuring tools that we purchased in order to measure that. And I still hear from a lot of people, and I sometimes witness myself, signs that seem excessively bright. And so I'm wondering, with the new code, are we maintaining any of that? If you could talk a little bit about those light levels from the existing code, how are we changing that? And, yeah.
So really, I think that the, the measurement we use is foot candle, and so, and that really applies to electronic message centers. So the signs that have a bunch of light bulbs in them, and sometimes they have, you know, movement and things like that. As far as other signs go, there's externally lit or internally lit. And typically, those have a little bit more of a dim hue to them, and they're a little bit softer on the eyes. So really, it's the EMCs that we're talking about. And in our code, in the proposed code, it limits the EMC brightness at .3 foot candle during the day. And then, you know, should we pass the illumination aspect of it, that would be dimmed, there's options. You can either dim to .1, which is essentially unseeable. You can turn it off, or you can show a black screen. And we made those options because we were hearing from sign owners and sign contractors that shutting the, you know, electronics on and off was going to harm their machines and reduce the lifespan of them. And so we figured that dimming them to a very low level will give the option of, of maintaining that equipment over the lifespan of it, or, or just shutting it off, based on whether or not people have timers and dimmers in their signs. And since 2018, Pocatello sign code has required folks to install dimmed EMCs, and so, you know, a few of them should have.
Yeah, I think that was part of all that same discussion. Is the, the first number of, that you gave, the maximum number of foot candles, is that the same as what we currently have?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're, you're not changing that. It, it would be whether they would be required to be
It's the curfew.
Dimmed or have a curfew. And you mentioned the other word, animation, which we are also reading a lot about, and we discussed that a lot too, and came up with requirements about how fast images could change, because if it's like really quickly, that it's distracting and everything, and we thought we came up with some good standards there. And I'm, want, if you could speak to how those are changing or if they're staying the same?
I believe they've stayed the same, so they're not really changing.
Okay. So the, when we say animation, the, the movement on the image or whatever it is? Or if it's a, an electronic sign with multiple images, how fast they change from one to the next?
Yes. Yeah, and there's standards in the code as far as how fast they can change, because just because it moves doesn't mean it's animated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think this might be my last one. Enforcement is, is another issue that I've heard a lot about, and we've read a lot about in the emails. And I was wondering if you could talk about how we enforce the sign code now and share that with people, and then if that is going to change or not change?
So now we are reactive in our code enforcement. So if we get a call or a complaint that says, hey, this sign's too bright, I've got an issue, you know, with, with these different aspects of a business, that's when we investigate and open a code enforcement case, you know, reach out to the business owner, and so that is
It's complaint-driven currently?
Oh, completely, yes.
Completely?
Yes.
And I guess when I'm talking about enforcement, I am interested because we have a code enforcement department, an ordinance enforcement department, that deals with lots of different types of ordinance enforcement. But with sign code enforcement, isn't that, my understanding is that is the planning and development department that actually goes out and checks out those complaints and everything? Is that?
Yeah, we do code enforcement on various land use issues, and so signs are one of them.
Okay. And, and that will continue?
Far as I know.
Okay. Okay. I think that's it for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Paulson?
Can you please address where it talks about in version one, restricting EMCs, the restrictions in that, to only residential zones? Am I correct in thinking that just makes the restrictions a waste of time? Because there are no EMCs in residential zones?
Yeah, I mean, and Brent might speak to this more eloquently. The, the honest truth is, when the Planning and Zoning Commission gave us that direction, it was really hard to understand how we were going to implement that, because there are very few, if any, EMCs in purely residential zones. And so it really wasn't much to implement.
Brent McLean, Planning Director for the City of Pocatello. Jen's exactly right. The code doesn't allow for EMCs in residential zones. So there may be a couple instances where you have a legal non-conforming, excuse me, legal non-conforming EMC in, in a residential zone, but very rare instance. And so it's really a mute point at that point. Currently in our code, there is a curfew in our RCP zones where EMCs are required to shut off, I believe at 9:30 at night, currently in the RCP zone. And so with the new proposed curfew, that would push that back a little bit and make it a standard, standardized curfew across all zoning districts for those EMCs.
Well, okay, sorry, follow-up. So, because it says, during curfew hours in residential zones, EMCs shall be shut off or dimmed. So if there aren't any, those dimming or shut-off times don't apply to any other zones in the city. So it's completely
They only wanted it applied to purely residential zones.
So there's, if version one were to pass, then it's essentially no EMC restriction?
That, that recommendation is from the Planning Commission.
Right.
We haven't included that in, in either of the versions. We haven't included that in either of the versions, just because it's really, doesn't do anything, because it may affect one or two signs in the whole city. And so we wouldn't include that in the text.
Okay.
And so that recommendation, we did not address from the Planning Commission in this proposal.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'm a little confused. I know there's no signs in residential, but we have a number of schools, and I think I've heard a few people go, schools, schools out there in the audience. And I appreciate you keeping it quiet out there, but schools, we do have some illuminated.
Correct. They are pretty much zoned RCP across the board in the city. They're not residential zone properties. They're zoned RCP.
But they bleed into residential?
Adjacent to residential, but that's where you have the conflict. Wherever you have a residential zone, a budding, a zone that is RCP or commercial or industrial or whatever it might be, you have that conflict, where you have the potential of an electronic message center being on when it's right adjacent to a residential zone. And it may not be in the residential zone, but the people who live adjacent to those properties are greatly affected by that.
So are we asking them to turn them down, dim them? What are we?
Our proposal would be to have them comply with the curfew requirements, to turn them, dim them down so they're to the point where you can't see them or turn them off, whatever works best for their equipment. That's what we're proposing in the new code.
Okay. Other questions for? I knew you didn't want to finish.
I forgot a couple. And you reminded me. So you brought up billboards, not billboard, signs, any signs, on the border of zones. And so we don't allow them in residential areas, and their recommendation was to not allow them in residential areas. But we do have situations where a lighted sign, whether a billboard or a school sign or something, is right next to a residential area and shining into people's houses at night. And I was wondering if there's anything, I don't think it's in the new code now, but if it could be done, if we could have some kind of special requirement when it's a border sign, for lack of a better way to put it. Is there something that can be put into the code that says, when you have a situation like that, that might, you know, directly impact a residential area, that that gets different consideration? Not just because it's in a zone that allows it, that it just moves forward?
Absolutely. We could write some sort of code language that would create a buffer around those residential zones. It's something, if the council wanted to include in a motion, we could address that. But our valley is unique in that where we have a lot of our residential areas on hillsides, you can see across the valley. And a lot of the complaints we get are for signs that are a quarter mile away from the actual house that the people are complaining about it. And so it's not as easy as if it were flat land, where you have buildings and trees blocking the view of all those signs. There's many occasions and complaints that we get where it's people who are looking down across, you know, a gully or whatever it might be. And so what is that buffer and what should it be? It gets to be really tricky to address all the circumstances. And that's, you know, we go back to trying to keep things simple. And the most simple thing is to treat everyone the same.
And I guess that's where dimming comes into play, because if you're gonna say, like, new, if somebody wants to build a new sign, and you have to determine whether it's on a border and who it's gonna affect and everything,
Yeah.
That becomes so complicated that if you just require all of them to be dimmed, then it's simple and fair? Is that, okay?
That's kind of our thought process. But if the council chose to go a different route with that, we would just recommend that you include some sort of language in whatever motion you make.
Okay. One real quick question. I was just curious about changing temporary sign to portable. Where do political signs come into that? Are they considered portable now?
Yep.
And so is that changing, what I understand to be the rules about, like, private property owners, how long they can have them up and?
Yeah, so part of what we aim to accomplish with the new code is to adhere to the legal requirements of not being content-based on our sign code. And so what we allow is for a single property can have three temporary signs, is what we're calling them, on the property of a specific size or square footage. We don't regulate what they put on that, but we do regulate how big of a sign and how many they can have on there. And so that is something that our previous code was very content-oriented, and we needed to get away from that.
I think that's a good move. And then my last question for now. And Jared, this might be more of a, it's kind of a legal question, so it might be more for you, I'm not sure. But there were some interesting comments in some of the emails about the city's legal right to change our code. And it sort of suggested that if you allow something now, that you have to allow it forever, that you can't take that away, meaning we couldn't change the code. And I was very curious about that. If you could talk a little bit about, like, what is our right and responsibility in terms of trying to come up with a new code?
So we have the right, of course, to change our code and to make adaptations to what we already have existing in our ordinances. What people are talking about, well, there's, I can't address everything, because I read a lot of the comments as well. But as has been discussed, there will be instances of legal nonconforming, which is another way of saying that they're grandfathered in. They were legal at the time they were built. And we're not affecting that. We are changing use, and there's talk of delaying that implementation of that use under the curfew rule that's being considered. So, yeah, there's a lot of things that is an option for the council. And we have worked with the planning department and the legal department to draft the versions that you have before you. And I don't have any serious concerns with either version as they are presented. So I think legally going forward, even though there might be some differences of opinion and some challenges to that, I think legally, we're in a good place.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Mangum.
So there was a limit on the number of portable signs and the size and whatnot. So let's say a missionary returns home, and we wanna litter our sign with welcome home, missionary, mangum, or whatever, right? Is there a limit on that number of signs I can put out there? Or what does that look like?
It's a good question. I hadn't thought about those decorative.
Technically, yes, but we are complaint-driven. So if we didn't receive a complaint, we wouldn't address it.
So I parked funny off my driveway, just unloading something and then getting back in my car. I was gone for two minutes and had police at my door. I'm like, dude, I'm leaving, you know? So, I mean, there might be some neighbors who are like, hey, I don't like that. So now you're here to tell me to tear down my welcome home missionary sign.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I might just mention that signs that do not require permits, one listed as holiday decorations, and I might consider that a holiday decoration.
A personal holiday.
Yeah.
Those are gray areas. They really are. And that's the hard thing with sign code. You can't address everything at every time. We do the best we can, and we don't drive around looking for them. We work from eight to five. We don't work on the weekends. And so now is that an open invitation to break the sign code? No. But the reality is, we're not out there looking for all those things either. And so technically speaking, it probably would not be allowed. And if someone complained, we'd have to go address it. But usually, in those instances, by the time we get out there, it's gone, and it's been resolved.
So illumination-wise, are we just talking signs, just in general, just signs? Or like, what are we talking about, illumination? Because if I live up here on the hill, there's the temple there, and it's pretty bright. So are we talking churches as well?
No, this is just for signs.
Yeah, we're not talking about building lighting.
We have different illumination standards throughout the city for lighting. This is just for signs, and the curfew is just for electronic message centers only, not any other sign.
Question by Councilmember Nichols.
So what was the, sort of the genesis of the curfew concept? Are we getting a lot of complaints on the EMCs?
Yes, we do get a lot of complaints on EMCs. And it's probably one of the most frequent complaints we get in our office. Now, and the hard thing is, to enforce those standards, for us to actually measure the light, we have to get in a boom truck and go up in front of the sign to measure that correctly, to get the accurate reading. So that requires us to coordinate with another department or someone to help us to get up there. And so the reality of us trying to enforce that is very, very difficult. And so what we typically do is call the owner of the sign and say, we received a complaint. Would you make sure that your sign is calibrated correctly? And that usually fixes it, but then a month or two later, it's bright again, and we get complaints about it again. And so that's something that we are constantly having to deal with, with electronic message centers, is that repeated complaint. And there's some signs that are absolutely the worst offenders. But we've gotta treat everyone equally and the same. And for us to do that, one of the things that, based on these complaints, is to have that curfew. We also had a lot of feedback from people in our survey saying that they wanted these signs to be turned down or turned off, because they want to be able to see the nighttime sky. They want to be able to, and I understand that this is just one element of lighting in the city. It's not everything. But this is one element that we can address in the sign code for lighting within the city.
So you said that if calibrated correctly, the problem usually goes away? So is this more enforcement issue?
Yeah, a lot of it is an enforcement issue, absolutely. And the ability to enforce that is very, very difficult. And I've been doing this for a long time. And I can, the only time I've ever been able to enforce it is when I got called out to a complaint on a sign that was at ground level. Because to be able to get in, you have to make those measurements directly in front of that sign. You can't measure it from the ground when it's, you know, 40 feet above you. It doesn't give you an accurate reading.
Right. One more follow-up. So if we were to implement the curfew, would the existing EMCs be grandfathered in, or would everything, would it apply to everything?
It would apply to everything. And that's why we would recommend having a delayed implementation of the curfew to allow people the time to modify their equipment if they need to. Most of the equipment that we have installed in the city would be able to make those changes immediately. But I do recognize that there may be some older or more outdated equipment, that it could be more difficult to make those changes. And so we would propose having a delayed enforcement of that portion of the code.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so real quick, and then Councilmember Mangum has one. But I want to hit these EMCs. 2017, 18, I think, is when we, all the city council jumped on a bus. We had billboard people with us, so we traveled around the city, and we looked at billboards and brightness and not-so-bright and animation and all of that mess. The billboard companies at that time said, this is the acceptable EMT that we have, or maybe you said
Foot candle.
Foot candle and stuff. Well, now, when we, they all go and set their machines to that, their equipment to that. And so I'm hearing that those, that gradually over time increases?
A lot of the complaints with that is, may not be billboard specifically. Sometimes it's related to specific property owners. So let's say you have a store that has an electronic message center on their pole sign. Those are really the biggest culprits. The billboards, there's a few of them that get brighter than they should, but for the most part, they're not too bad.
So when they set their, the billboard companies, they've set those numbers, they've basically stayed the same, with the exception of a few that
Correct.
Somehow the movement of the earth has jiggled those up or something. But we're talking about mostly businesses that, I guess, don't know or don't know how to turn it down or something.
Or they think brighter is better, so they turn it up.
All right.
Or you get a new manager, or someone else is in charge of the device and doesn't know how to, or what the rules are.
How to do it, okay. All right. So, Councilmember Mangum?
I think I have like three, four, maybe four questions. First question. So a person has a building, they go by the sign code, and they've got the specified amount of signage that the code allows. Is there a way for them to get a permit or an exception to add, say, an additional sign? Like, hey, I don't feel like I'm being recognized, I need one more, or whatever. Is there an exception there?
I think that's a conditional use permit in the proposed code. Right now, it's a sign exception.
Okay. Number two. So new tenant comes in, I shut down my business, new tenant comes in, there's already a pole sign there. Does that person get to continue use of that pole sign, or do they have to tear it down and start over in adjacent, with an agreement with the code, or?
That's just a face change. And in this new code, a permit's not required.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So, two more questions. Capping billboards. What led us to that thought process? Why? Why cap signs, these billboard signs?
So it really is driven by the survey that we received from the community. It was very evident in the responses that people didn't like billboards. The community at large does not like billboards. And so most people want us to require to have them pulled down, but we recognize that there's one, financial investment into them, and two, they do serve a purpose. And so our recommendation is to cap them. You know, we have nearly 100 billboards in this community, and I think that it's enough. And there is a trend across the country where billboards aren't being capped. And there's even states that don't even require, or don't even allow billboards in them anymore. And so it's not like this is something new or abnormal. Chubbick does not allow billboards. You cannot install a billboard in Chubbick. And if they annex a property with a billboard, they're required to remove that billboard within five years. So our standards, you know, where we're, we are, what we're proposing is to prohibit new ones, but we do recognize that, one, there's a purpose for them, but two, we want to limit growth of the billboards. We want them maintained, we want them to still look good and serve the purpose that they're serving. There's definitely a reason to have them, but I think what we have is enough.
So, follow-up to that last question. So I have a billboard, wind blows it over, can I put it back up?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the curfew of seven to 11. How do, 11 to 7? Yeah. You know what I mean? You know what I mean? Whatever. So this curfew, what, um, what, what provoked that? Like what provoked that specific time range?
We, we matched the noise ordinance. And the noise ordinance runs from 11 to seven also. So just for consistency and ease of implementation.
Now, just to be clear though, let's say you have a business and they open up at six o'clock in the morning. Their sign can turn on at six o'clock in the morning because it's 11 to seven or within hours of operation. And so if, if they're open for business, those signs are allowed to turn on.
All right. I knew there was another one. Go ahead.
One more. Um, actually, Councilmember Mangum's question just made me
Don't blame him.
Think of something else that I want to clarify. Um, the, you know, you asked about the cap on billboards and we've got these two versions, um, or possibilities that were presented. Um, and I noticed that, you know, the version one, I believe is no cap at all. And version two is capping. Um, there was a talk early on or earlier on about cap and replace. Um, and I just wondered, did that idea get dropped and why?
Yes, we discussed that idea a lot. And we dropped that idea because what I think is going to be an issue with the cap and replaces, how do you track, um, the removal of a sign with the replacement of the sign? Let's say a sign gets pulled down and how long do they get to keep that ability to build that, that new sign again? One. And who tracks that? Two. And how do we make sure it's not being abused that someone says, okay, this sign was removed. And then they come back in five years and say, well, we're going back to this sign that was removed at this property. People change within the city, um, constantly. Uh, you guys won't be here forever. We won't be here forever. How do we maintain and, and track that, that consistently? And so in my mind, I would rather see a cap, a straight cap, or allow them with the restrictions that we placed within the new code, which clarifies where they can be placed. Um, and, and makes it more simple to, um, identify where those new locations can go. And so that's why we dropped, dropped the cap and replace. I think it makes sense if, if I was going to be here or, you know, Jen was going to be here for a long term and would never, that we could track those and have a good system of tracking those. But the reality is there's the turnover and the ability to, to track that cleanly and effectively. I just, I just don't see that as a real solution. And I know there's other communities that do it. And I think it is, in my mind, not the best solution.
One quick follow up.
Okay.
Um, just went out of my head. Uh, oh, you were talking about areas where new signs could go. Um, and this is one thing that you're talking about in the new code. Um, one of the concerns that I have is, um, the Northgate area and, and new development. Um, and that that become, you know, like another Yellowstone or something. Um, and the idea is to really, um, well, I was going to say limit signs in those areas, but actually more than limit, not allow. Um, and I think when that, Northgate as an example, when that development was originally being presented, that was part of the idea of, of, of the vision of, of that particular development was that it wouldn't have all of that kind of, um, signage. And so the option with no cap, what does that mean, um, to where the new signs can go? Can, are there areas where we're not going to allow them? Or is it just anywhere?
It would be based on the zoning designation and the location, how close it is to another off premise sign. And so the, those would be the determining factors. Um, and so, um, could it go into Northgate potentially? Um, if the zoning was the right zone and the distance from another sign was far enough away. Um, and that's where we would have to be very careful about our rezoning too. If, if the implementation of a, of a billboard is something that, um, really concerns you as you look at a rezone, you have to look at all the potential uses of that rezone. And if it is not a location where you want a billboard as a use, then you'd have to consider whether it's worth that rezone. So yes, you could, potentially.
Thank you.
Okay. And I have one question. Then I, we have to move this along a little bit. There's some people here that are falling asleep out there. So we'll move it along. But I do have one question. Um, Council President Lurick talked and asked about political signs and I would advocate to just do away with all political signs in this. But, um, what about realtor signs? I'm very curious.
Falls under the same category as a, as a temporary sign. So you could have, you know, I think on a residential property, the code allows for three signs. Um, and I'm trying to remember the square footage of it, but you could have potentially three signs on your property.
And is there a time limit on these signs? No?
No, because enforcement of that is impossible. How, how do you know when it got put up and when it got taken down?
Realtors typically have how many days it's been on the market.
I know.
A few years ago, they would go with like five, five days, they were done and gone or they didn't get them put in. But when it's a slow market, they're there a long time.
So. No. And I'm, I'm sure we could come up with some system, but the management of that, we don't have staff to do that.
Okay. All right. I want to make sure we don't mess with those because that's, that's an important piece.
And, and the commercial requirements for temporary signs is different than residential because we do recognize that they're larger properties and they, so, so they have larger allowances for those temporary signs.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, it does mean that political signs can stay up year round?
Forever. If the private property owner wants to allow that.
I'll be watching for that. I'll tell you that. Okay. Uh, before you leave, is there any, has there been any correspondence the city council has not seen? I know we've received a lot of emails today and
I don't think so.
Stuff on this. Now that you're, Madam Clerk, has there been any in your office we have not received?
Council's received all correspondence.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Okay. I told you, I was just about ready to move. So.
Thanks for hearing me. Tim Snell, I'm one of the physicians at the Pain and Spine Center. We have, I think, four different businesses over there. We just like to throw our support behind it because we'd like to be able to put some signage on there. We do have a small sign out there by the street. Some of our older patients get a little confused and go to other places until they find ours. Um, so it would be helpful to be able to do it.
Super. Thank you. Uh, any others?
Hi, I'm Anne Swanson. Do you want me to sign in my address here?
Um, yeah, why don't you sign it in for sure?
Thanks.
Yeah, your name and city, not necessarily your physical address.
Pocatello. Got it. So I'm one of the citizens that responded to the sign questionnaire that came out a few years ago. Um, first of all, I want to express my appreciation to the city for gathering citizen input on issues like this. I think it's important to listen. And so I'm here to reiterate my feelings that I shared on that, um, survey that came out. The first one is I do support a cap on the, I believe it's called off premises signs or billboards. I've lived in a community where there didn't seem to be a cap and it becomes extremely overwhelming and really aesthetically unpleasing. So I'd like to support that, the cap, which I believe was version, version two. And then secondly, also the, um, curfew from 11 to seven on those illuminated signs. And I think the exceptions that, um, our city folks, um, expressed were also appropriate. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others in support of the application?
My name is Robert Richway. I, uh, I support version two of the options here. I have three main considerations. Uh, one of them is not, uh, I don't agree with it, but, uh, with version two, but, uh, proliferation of off premise signs and billboard signs. Secondly, the allowance of all night illumination. I'm strong in favor of both, both of those. I would propose that the hearing examiner be taken out of the equation. I'd rather see, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think the, the, the weight of several people considering those issues is an important way to go. And so I propose that the hearing examiner not be in, in that, that consideration. So if you travel into Pocatello from the south, you see, I'll call them billboards or pole signs. And this is not a very good look for our city. It's, it's kind of depressing how it represents our community. And it's disappointing that that would be allowed. And they are there. And it seems once they are there, they never come down. In a previous meeting, there was a claim to economic viability and the number of signs. And I think he was referring, referring to billboard signs. So I took the liberty of investigating what some of the other cities in Idaho are doing. Boise City Code, Chapter 11, quote, "The number of billboard signs in the city will not be increased," unquote. Napa City Code, Chapter 10, prohibited signs, billboard signs shall not be allowed. Twin Falls, Chapter 10, quote, "All signs must pertain only to the use or products located on the same property as the sign." In addition to that chapter, quote, "No commercial billboard signs." So I think we're not in the Wild West here when we have the proposals in version two. I think we're, we're in line and I don't think economic viability is an issue here. Um, I hope we can share the wisdoms of some of the other cities in Idaho. Um, some of the, the other, the other issue I mentioned was the restrictions of the curfew. I mean, I see no need to have a sign on where the business is closed. And what, and due to our geography, you can, you can see it for miles. Uh, the, it's, it's light pollution affects those who'd like to enjoy our, our, the view of our city without being accosted by signs that are blinking, flashing, or constantly changing color and light intensity. Um, it's a visual annoyance. It detracts from our quality of life. Lastly, as I mentioned, uh, I'd propose a hearing examiner be taken out of the exception process. You have a professional staff that can handle it. And if not, they can go in front of planning and zoning. Um, I, I have more to say, but my time and your patience, I'm sure, at an end.
Thank you. Any others supporting the application? Any uncommitted to the application?
My name is Theron Pollard. I operate Westwood Discount for 35 years, TP Advertising for 35 years. I had made a petition. I went to over a hundred businesses talking about window signs because the stipulation ordinance states that window signs are a problem in the ordinance. And I feel that the term window sign should be taken out of the application altogether because all the businesses that I talked to said that that, that could be interpreted to be anything in the window. It's a sign, it's in the window, that's a window sign. So I think that the window sign portion of the application be stricken from the application. Other than that, I think it's probably a good application to have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Rob Kirkham from Pocatello. Uh, I won't have time to get through everything I prepared because so much came up in that discussion. And I want to thank you all for the thoughtful discussion and thank the city staff for all the thought they've put into this. It is clear that they've really tried to consider all angles on this. Um, I appreciated Councilmember Mangum's question about dimming and why it only applies to signs because, you know, outside of my window, my bedroom window, I have a street light and it's pretty bright. So I guess we're getting rid of one kind of light, but you know, it seems like we're picking on signs. I'm concerned about murals not requiring a permit. I'm concerned that even though we've theoretically taken out content-based distinctions, that murals and painted signs cannot be determined unless you analyze the content of the paint. So I think that we're, we have a problem with that. The biggest problem that I think we have is the complaints themselves. Back in May, I did a public records request in which I asked for, quote, "A copy of all complaints received by any city department in the last 12 months that pertain to signage, sign lighting, or the sign code generally." I asked for any records or notes taken, formal requests, logs of phone calls, et cetera. The city sent me two years of complaints, even though I only asked for one. How many complaints did the city send me? 15. How many of those complaints pertain to billboards specifically? Five. And there were no complaints regarding static billboards, for the record. So either the complaints aren't being recorded and reported properly and given to the city, to city, um, citizens when they're being asked for them, or we are exaggerating the number of complaints that we're receiving. In either case, I think that we have a problem. I find it also wild that when I looked through the complaints, two of the five complaints about billboards were made by a city council member. So I just thought that was relevant. I only have 30 seconds, so I won't have time to get through the rest of mine. But I do think that, I, I would, I would frankly oppose both, but obviously, given my background, I would prefer the version that would not place a cap on billboards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Kurt Lipinski, Membership Manager, Pocatello Chubbuck Chamber of Commerce. And I am here representing Matt J. Hunter, the President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. And he asked me to read this. So I've given each of you a copy and I will stick to as close as I can. So, uh, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, on behalf of the membership of the Pocatello Chubbuck Chamber of Commerce, which includes the very smallest of businesses in our community to the very largest, thank you for hearing us today. We would like to remind everyone that businesses in our community and in many others have continued to struggle with the new buy it on online mentality that has existed since COVID. We need to ensure that we don't do anything that would make it more difficult for our community and businesses to promote themselves or their products. We want to thank all the staff and community members that have worked so hard on this new sign code. We think there have been some good changes made. And we also believe that the new sign code is easier to understand. With that being said, we still struggle with two minor pieces. Number one, off premises signs. We appreciate that two versions are being presented to you today. The current sign code on billboards is very restrictive and we see no reason to change it or attempt to eliminate future off premises signs as version one allows this. Number two, small one, but, dimming requirements. We don't like the fact that under 17 dot zero seven sign standards, bullet number five, this code makes a connection which says that the signs are a nuisance. We take issue with that perception of the signs for our members. Our 2040 comprehensive plan talks about this, about this following. Under environmental resilient goal for strategy D, it states, quote, "Adopt lighting, adopt lighting standards that protect community health, safety, welfare, and aesthetics by reducing glare and light pollution." This is an honorable goal. This is an honorable goal. This is an honorable goal that we feel we should pursue. But this is much larger than just signs, and the business community should not be the only ones required to comply. The city needs to comply. The city needs to develop a plan for the whole community that includes shielding of all lights in the city, adopting standards of how much illumination can come from individual homes as well. I would say that we hear more complaints about the neighbor's bright light that comes on at 2:00 a.m. when the cat walks across their yard than we have heard about the signs in our community. When this full plan is set into motion, we should set a date where the business community and the rest of the community can all comply together at the same time. Let's fix these few issues, and then we believe that the sign code that we can all agree with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Hi, Wes Van Dyke with YescO Sign and Lighting Repair, Mr. Mayor and Council Members. Thanks for your efforts to bring this to this point. I'm sure it took many hours to get to this level of presentation. The current proposed language does restrict pole signs. The scenarios that were presented to you did not show anything but favorable outcomes, but smaller developments with smaller buildings. The outcome was much different when we ran scenarios ourselves. So it does prohibit pole signs in many of the zones. It restricts sign area and size. So we would be not in favor of it, we'd be against it. These point-of-purchase signs are what we would say the least expensive, yet most effective form of advertising. And so we're only talking about, or I'm only representing, my displeasure with the language representing on-property signs. And I think that language and, or the ordinance proposing changes to size is concerning. And then also, the existing non-conforming status. So many of you are running on tablets right now that I would say are there, maybe two, three years old at the very most. But issuing a non-conforming status to an electronic message center would mean that at some point, just as your tablet, they'd have to be replaced. And they'd have to be brought into compliance at that time, whether you sold the business and/or did modifications to the building or updates. Also, you've got curfew on advertising. You've also got additional hold times if you're restricting communication. So the language in the code does say it's going to increase hold times, change or restrict animation. So your use of communication is changing and restrictive, as well as the curfew on advertising and the tools that are essential to businesses, local businesses. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Frank Newding, Pocatello. Guys, we've had five Planning and Zoning Committee meetings to go over this issue. It's, I'm sure it's a bone of contention for everybody. We've done it for every three or four years. We come back and revisit this subject. I think that what we did here on this survey is we have a very, very small survey sample, 398 people, and you had like or dislike on your survey. I mean, that's just not very scientific in order to make big decisions about what happens with signs in our community. So the sample size too small, not scientific enough. And then the display on these, the Planning and Zoning was on new buildings, on how a new building is going to have a lot more face or sign face on a new building. But that doesn't address what we have here with older buildings. So, and if the council was to adopt these billboard standards, what would the city be doing with the transit department and the mobile billboards that the city sells for buses? The city gathers quite a bit of advertising revenue for selling ad designs on mobile buses. So, anyway, I think what we have here is something that we had at Pocatello Square is that Northgate is an important piece of Pocatello. There's, we want some protection there. But that gets into taking rights away from property owners that may want to have a billboard there. So my suggestion is, is that the amount of people that, and the importance of this decision is that we take more time to study this issue instead of trying to come up with a decision this evening. I think President Lurg said it properly. I mean, there was 10 or 15 questions she had, and I'm sure the rest of you have a lot of questions. But I think that this needs a lot more, and I mean, a lot more detail and a lot more study in order to make an intelligent decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Nathan Young. I represent YescO Outdoor Media. Thank you for hearing us and being with us this evening. We, as an organization, have been invested in this community for a very long time. And we are a fourth-generation, family-run business. And we love Pocatello, we love the state of Idaho. And we are in opposition to both versions of the code. A cap and replace is common, as it's been said. It's not hard to manage. Some municipalities much larger than Pocatello are doing it through permits. We all have permits, we exchange them, it works. And so if we had our choice, we would propose that it would be a cap and replace system. The second main issue that we have is related to the curfew. We have continued to push on this time and time again throughout these meetings, that a curfew just doesn't make sense. It's rare, it's not worth it. Why would we darken the city? Think about the safety considerations. Think about my generation. I have young kids, I don't go to bed. I'm up with them, I'm driving them around. 11:00 a.m., 7:00 or 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. That's living hours for us, young adults. And if a city's trying to attract this type of age group, it needs to be bright and vibrant and inviting. And the second piece to the curfew is, business doesn't sleep. Business is supposed to be out there. And I urge you to think about the small businesses that use the outdoor advertising medium to promote their messages, not only to people driving on I-15, but around the city, getting off and getting gas. It promotes the city. And the last item I would add here is under section, on the off-premise side, under Sections F2 and F3, it talks about how when it comes time in version one to put a new billboard up, the billboard company has to jump through all the hoops, meet all the restrictions, then has to then go through another hearing. What is that going to accomplish? I think the city and the people need to have a voice, absolutely. But how does that, how does that put the billboard company? When we jump through the hoops, we do everything you asked, and then we have to defend it? What more do you want us to do? And so I think there needs to be an equitable solution where the city can, and the citizens can vocalize their opinions, but also there's a level set ground of what's trying to be accomplished in that discussion. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Hi, Rich Kirkham. In anticipation of Kindness Week, I'll try to keep my remarks as kind as possible. I support the current ordinance that we have with regard to billboards. I'll speak primarily to billboards. The reason for that is that, just what Mr. Young just said about the hearing process. They've expanded the hearing process now to all zones. I think it used to be, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but that if you were in an industrial zone, that that wasn't an issue because, you know, it's industrial, for one thing. So I like that version of it. If it came right down to it, and I had to make a decision, I would go with version one because I don't want to see us put the brakes on people's ability to exercise their rights to commercial speech. I think it's a very important right. I think we need to protect it. When Brent said, you know, he thinks 100 is enough, I was absolutely amazed by that. I'm going to talk to him about some stock picks because it sounds like he knows exactly what the right number is. And I don't know how we know what that number is. It's a market-driven thing. It's partly, I think, a factor of what goes on in the business community and in the community in general. And so I think that it's so restrictive now that we can barely find a place to put a billboard. Just a couple of prepared remarks here. I think we live in a canceled world. We're canceling so many things. I hate to see us cancel any more rights to free speech. Commercial speech is a protected form of speech. Whether people like that or not, you can have an opinion about that. I agree with you, Brian. I don't really like the political signs, I really don't. But they have a right to put up those signs and inform the community when they're running for an office, and they have a right to advertise their campaign. I would stand with them to do that, even though I really personally don't like the political signs that there are. And I think that the same can be said about commercial speech when it comes to billboard advertising, that that should be a right that we protect and stand behind and not cancel it because of the whims or whatever seems to be popular at the moment. I know that norms change and that people like to have new things that they want to do. But this is one of those areas where I don't think we should change. I think we should stay firm on the right to free speech, even commercial speech. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Thanks for having us. Rick Magnuson, Pocatello, longtime ad agency owner, but I'm here more in my role as Vice Chairman of the Idaho Ad Federation. Also, longtime board member of the Pocatello Ad Federation. If I may, I had emailed this document all of these days as well, but I realized time's short to review everything. Apologize in advance for a bit of redundancy here as I go through this. Our organizations are responsible for helping to support and protect the rights of advertisers and advertising. We've been around a long, long time under the American Ad Federation. We've been involved in the state of Idaho with the cities Boise, Napa, Garden City, Meridian, over the last few years. Also stood here back in 2017, as Brian will remember, when we went through this last time. We're opposed to both versions one and two. We've been involved in this since the inception as well, spoken at five different meetings. What I'd like to do in the essence of time here tonight is just hit on a couple of these points because you've heard plenty that kind of gets the gist of where we're going. First of all, again, some of the limitations of this. We're, going back to the beginning, we felt like the survey, based on professional standards, is nowhere near statistically valid. You're talking about 379 respondents to a self-directed survey that was, quite frankly, not very well-written and not very well-executed. When you start to look at professional research in that sense, and then we hear terms like "the majority of the public," "the majority of the community," "most respondents," without attaching those real numbers to it, it's hard to justify. Over 58,000 people in Pocatello did not reply to this, 379 did. Second, we feel like the fact that there now seem to be two versions gives you an either-or scenario, which is kind of tough from a voting standpoint, provides confusion, maybe some conflict, tells us that maybe there's a little bit more work to be done, as has been noted tonight, especially when P&amp;Z, who we worked with and a lot of people here worked with over this length of time, firmly recommended version one. And now there seems to be two versions. Moving through just a couple other of these comments because you've heard a lot of this already. Hundreds of local businesses have invested thousands of dollars in signage. While they may end up grandfathered in when it comes time to sell that business or to upgrade signage, they will be out of compliance. That's a hardship and an expense, and is tough for especially small business owners, many of whom our ad agency represents, to go through. Imposing curfew hours on the use of signs to advertise and promote businesses denies them the rights, the owners of those outdoor companies, about a third of their investment in sign value. When our ad agency signs contracts on behalf of our clients, like Citizens Community Bank, Phil Meader, Mollinelli's, many others, we're buying those 24/7 for our clients. To limit those hours between 11 and 7 means those contracts are null and void. We're not getting the value of the advertising that we've purchased on behalf of our clients. That poses a lot of issues. Also, it's important to note that those restrictions are not imposed by other cities in our state. Negative Economic Effects. We've been the ad agency of record for Ready, Regional Economic Development, Bannock Development Corporation, over many, many years. You guys all know, I mean, we love.
Thank you.
Is that time?
That's time.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Good evening, Mayor Blad and City Council. And Mayor Blad, I must say, I think you're the third mayor that's been sitting in that seat with all the years I've been coming here to sign ordinances, changes, all that. So I guess you know how old I am. But I do want to say first and foremost, I've heard a lot of good discussion tonight, and I think.
Kent, you need to state your name for.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
Marbo, Lamar Advertising. I thought you knew me, I've been here so many times.
I do, but the public may not.
I apologize.
And I can assure you, I won't be the last mayor you stand in front of us.
I hope I am.
Over the next 40 years, there's going to be plenty of them. So, okay, go ahead.
So, first and foremost, did you all receive the letter from Lamar today from our council? Thank you for reading. When you do, really read the paragraph on page two, top paragraph, which really, you know, we oppose the curfew. No question, the curfew will not work. Takes away business that, you know, we have contracts, we have clients, and we sell our billboards 24/7. And I still think this sign change, there's still a lot of questions that we've already gone over, you know, the residential zone, questions that you all brought up. I just wanted to kind of go over a few things that I heard from you. Illuminated billboard signs only illuminate on the sign face. That's a fact. They don't illuminate off the face, only on the sign. So there's no illumination that goes into anybody's yard, house, et cetera. Same with digital. They just illuminate on the digital, they don't explode off the digital. You can see them from away, but they are not lighted to go off of the sign face itself. So I wanted to clarify that. Our digitals are, as Mayor Blad said back in 2018, we did ride around, and the candle situation was fixed back then. That was another ordinance that we went over. That's been, they haven't gotten brighter, I guarantee you, the digital signs. And I will say, I do not agree with staff on cap and replace. As Mr. Young said, cap and replace can work. Boise uses it, Napa uses it, a lot of cities use it. And it is not tough to keep track of signs that come down where we would be given or granted a certificate per se to use at a different time and only be able to build that sign in a zone that is available for outdoor or off-premise signs. That is zone for off-premise. So it's, I mean, as we've heard, the sign ordinance right now that we have is restrictive. We've only built one sign since 2017. That's it. And you don't see a lot of signs going on. So the cap and replace can be a good thing. So those are just some issues I just wanted to clarify with. I appreciate your time, and I think we do need to work on this a little more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Nikki Johnson, I'm with Blaze Sign here in Pocatello. My apologies for coming in late. My first complaint is that we were not informed. Please add me to your mailing list. This is the third meeting. You guys have had no emails, no mail. Luckily, I was watching you online from the house and decided I have stuff I need to say. First off, I do believe that the sign code that is in place, were it enforced, would solve so many problems. I did hear that it was kind of a complaint-driven enforcement. I do have some complaints then. Window signage, we have lost so much business because we are told they're over their signage allowance, over their signage allowance. They go somewhere else. I drive by, they've got their window signage up. Personally, the other gentleman that spoke, I think window signage, leave it alone. That's their windows. They can put up curtains, they can put up something, is what I feel as a sign company. Secondly, the survey that was done, I also believe was faulty. We didn't get one of those either. We luckily saw it secondhand. One of the things that was most appalling to me was, when it came to the billboards, the pictures that it showed were of downtown Salt Lake. Really? I mean, it was, do you like this better or this better? If it was of a city of a more comparable size, I think it would have been a little more fair of what they like. And like you say, if minimal surveys were sent back in, that does not reflect the majority of Pocatello, especially new business owners. Signage is so important for these new businesses. They want to be found, they want to start up a business, they want to prosper. Let's give them some signage. I do understand we need to clean it up a little bit. But like I said, if we can make some enforcement of what we already have, it's going to go a long way. Lumens on the billboards. We, as a sign company, have been called before. This sign is too bright, too bright. We go out there, it's not. We go out there, it's not. A suggestion for that is as they're going through their ads, as they're putting them together, make their backgrounds not bright white. That seems to be why people think they're brighter, and it just comes across brighter. Same lumens, you know, maybe they can tone it down, a light blue or something other than the white, and solve so many complaints. I don't know if it's been gone over, and I don't know if it has changed in the proposal about the height of signs or next to the street. Drive through downtown Phoenix, you can't find anything because their signs are not visible. They're hid. Pretty city, but you can't find out where you're going unless you live there. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
My name is Jim Woodland. I'm with Keller Williams Commercial. I have a client that is at 1135 Yellowstone Rubber Ducky Car Wash. When he bought the property, tore the building down, there was an easement that was created by the previous owner that had a billboard on it. And currently, he's being told that he can't advertise there because it overexceeds his limitations. He spends about $7,600 bucks this last year in advertising because the sign's right in front of his business, and Jennifer's saying that he can't advertise there. It just doesn't make any sense to my client. Why would he forego advertising there? She says you can advertise somewhere else, but then a competition would, you know, maybe advertise right in front of his business. So somewhere that needs to be addressed, and if there's somebody that has a sign that does not belong to them that's on the property, how that can be addressed to fit the square footage.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Mike Cybrich, 1745 Pocatello Creek Road. And I oppose anything that has any type of cap on it. I feel that any cap on any type of outdoor advertising will restrict personal property rights. I'm a property owner, owns commercial property, and I feel I should have the ability to build a sign on my property if I want to. Don't mean I will, but if I want to. And caps put the thumb on the scale to the existing sign companies. Okay. And both your plans, one and two, they actually violate goal two of the comprehensive plan. Goal two, it restricts, it actually restricts business operations, and that's not the function of goal two. And goal four, which promotes walkability around the community, turning the lights off restricts walkability. It makes it dangerous to go anywhere. Crime is inversely proportional to lighting. If you're going to have something, want your car broken in or get in a assault or something, just walk around in the dark area of town. If you want it, and if you have dark issue, you always walk to the light side of the street. So this lighting thing is kind of a fallacy. And we're talking about pole signs, electronic messaging signs. Somebody mentioned they don't see them in residential neighborhoods, but I do. They're all over the place. And for instance, the American flag is a pole sign. It makes a nice statement. It's throughout our residential neighborhoods and commercial. Christmas, you see flashing-lit signs through the residential neighborhood. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. And everybody likes that. They go in their cars, they go see the Christmas lights. So what is this deal about everybody opposing lighting? It's particular, it's some sort of psychological thing. It's good for some things, and it's good for not other things. And I just wanted to mention those unintended consequences. And in your painted windly signs on our holidays, they'd have to have to permit to paint a mural on every one of their windows. And so there's some unintended consequences, and I think the existing sign ordinance, the way it is, is perfect. And there's not much chance or things that need to be improved in it. So just leave it alone.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Michael Malcolm with 9449 West Caribbean Road, Pocatello, Idaho. Couple of things I wanted to share. The first off, as it pertains to the curfew, I think it was mentioned earlier that the purpose of the signs is to warn, inform, educate, advertise. There was a variety of reasons. The information that a hospital would have or a gas station or a hotel that's 24-hour business, that's helpful information to inform. We feel like the outdoor, off-premise billboard signs serve as a very similar purpose for 24-hour type advertising, whether it's billboard out on the interstate informing people of services and resources such as hotels, fuel stations, to come off the interstate and then access those. We also have other information that we can display such as Amber Alerts. We can have the capability of doing this month, it was mentioned, the kind month of September, we can promote things of that nature, and also mental health issues. We also have a campaign right now that we're currently running or going to be running here shortly for the suicide prevention. If someone's driving around at 2:00 AM and they see a suicide prevention ad on a billboard, that may be impactful for them in that moment. And if the signs are turned off, it might, you know, have that message not be seen. The second thing is, as mentioned earlier about the complaints to the billboards, it mentioned it was five of those complaints that were reported, all of those were referring to electronic billboards. There were zero complaints as it pertained to the traditional poster-paper-type billboard I'm not in favor of either option one or option two. I think the wording of a variety of those still needs some work. And I would feel very good if you guys as a council and mayor to consider continuing to perfect these sign ordinances in a way that would be beneficial for the community. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay. Thank you then. With that, there's a lot of questions. Jen and Brent, give you an opportunity to go through some of these. I don't know if you wrote them down. I've
Do you want me to respond, or do you want to ask questions first?
No, go ahead and respond.
So a lot of things were brought up, and I do appreciate those individuals who spoke. So a couple of things, I guess I just want to focus on. The issue of lighting and the safety of the community because we're asking for EMCs to be turned off, I don't think the reality is signage isn't used to light up our city and to provide safety for our city. That's the purpose of streetlights and building lights. Signage is, and we have specific standards for that signage in our code that requires that lighting to be shielded, to be directed down. It cannot spill off of the property. And so we do have specific signage for safety purposes in our code. Signs, they are not there to light up a property to provide safety. I think that's a very important thing to understand. The other thing I want to make clear is that the curfew does apply only to electronic message centers. So billboards that are static, traditional-style billboards, those would not adhere to the curfew. Only the electronic message center billboards would adhere to that curfew. As far as the survey goes, there are a lot of comments about the survey. We sent quite a lot of advertisement regarding that survey two years ago, and we did receive just under 400 responses to that, which is a statistically valid survey for the size of our community. We received the exact same number for our parks and open space plan just recently, and our consultants have recognized that that is a statistically valid survey as well. So based on the size of our community, it does meet those requirements. Regards to pole signs, based off the testing that we did, we felt like what we are asking for with our pole signage, it is allowed, and the size of those, generally speaking, are quite a bit larger than what currently is allowed. May there be an instance where it might be a little smaller, potentially. But overall, you're looking at an increase in signage for freestanding signs, and that's for either monument signs or pole signs. Let's see, what else do I want to address? Oh, I think it needs to be also very clear that if a sign becomes legal non-conforming, that sign owner has a right to maintain it and to provide the upgrades that it needs to stay in service. And that use will remain with the land. And so it does not go away. If a different property owner buys a property, that sign has the right to stay there. It is just like any other use, that signage is a grandfathered part of that. And so it will not go away because it becomes, a different property owner purchases it, change of hands, those things will remain in place, and they won't just go away. I want that to be very clear. And so those updates and those upgrades to that signage, we want those signs to remain in good order. We want them to be attractive still. And so they don't just leave. They won't at any point just leave unless the property owner decides to remove them themselves. They don't go away. I'm not going to talk about that. I think one of the things that, you know, we're here in this meeting, we heard a few comments in favor of the code and a lot of comments about it, against it. And that's very typical when we come to these public hearings, is that you have those who are in opposition come out in great numbers, and those who are in favor don't. But the thing that we're trying to do with this code is we're trying to balance the needs of everybody. We have the needs of the business community, which I value and I respect, and we've tried very hard to increase their visibility. We've tried very hard to provide more signage opportunities, whether it's wall signs or window signs or freestanding pole signs, we've drastically increased their ability to advertise. We've also listened to the community and the things that the community has said, the things that are concerning to them, and tried to reasonably address those concerns as well with the cap on the billboards and with the curfew. And we've gone through a lot of back and forth with sign contractors, with business owners. We've changed this code a lot from where it started, and we've recognized where, oh, maybe this isn't quite what we want, and we've made those alterations. And I think where we have landed now has been years of thought, years of testing, years of listening, and making alterations. Now, that doesn't mean that we've changed everything just because someone doesn't like it. We don't listen to one voice. We don't listen to one demographic voice. We listen to the community as a whole and try to balance that. And that's what we're trying to achieve with this sign code. And so if you have any questions for me regarding the comments, I'm happy to answer any of those questions.
Questions, council?
There were two things. You addressed most of what I had noted, but a couple people commented on the hearing process for billboards and that that's problematic, and I was wondering if you could explain.
Okay. So currently in the code, when a billboard application comes in, if it's within a certain distance from a residential neighborhood, we send out notices that there is a potential billboard coming in the area. And if someone reaches out to us and requests a hearing, we require that to go through a public hearing process with the hearing examiner. The option one in the new code would require that hearing regardless of where it's located, that it would have to go through that same public hearing process. Typically, most billboards are going to be located within that distance requirement to be noticed. And so all we're doing is just making it the installation or potential installation of a billboard public to the community so they have an opportunity to make comment and have an opportunity to address any issues or concerns that they might have related to that. And so that's the difference with option one versus what we currently have in the sign code.
And option two?
Option two is a cap.
Doesn't worry about that because it's capped.
It's capped, so there aren't new billboards, so it's not
Okay. And then there was another comment about, I can't remember the exact words, but that the new code is basically focusing on new buildings, not old buildings. I think the comment was made with regard to signage area allowed and what do we do with old buildings that we're not taking those into consideration?
So anything that's existing would remain in place. And I think what you're going to find is everything that's existing, for the most part, is going to be undersized, and people will be able to add more signage than what they actually have now. And so the sign companies will be able to go back to their clients and say, you have an opportunity for more signage now with the passing of this code. And they will have an opportunity to provide more signage than what they actually have. And that's going to be pretty much across the board with most properties. And so the existing signage will remain. We're not touching anything that's existing. And if it doesn't meet the current code, it becomes grandfathered, and it can remain. We're not requiring it to be removed. And anything from the adoption of the code forward would adhere to the new standards. And so if, let's say, someone moved into an empty building and they took all the signage down and they wanted to put new signage up, we would look at the new code and see what signage was allowed based on the new code. signage was allowed based on the new code.
And then I think the last one that I had that wasn't addressed yet is, and I didn't quite understand this, but maybe you did. The issue of a sign, and I think this is a billboard or off-premise sign that is located on a property, but the sign is not owned by that property owner.
Yeah, that's a unique situation. So, and I don't know if this is the proper venue to address it because it is a very specific thing. But generally speaking, if there is a billboard, an off-premise sign on a property, as soon as you put a sign that advertised for that business on that billboard, it then becomes an on-premise sign.
Yeah.
And so, and then what you end up with is two on-premise freestanding signs, which is not according to the city ordinance. So that's, it doesn't happen very often. I think I've run into it twice now in my career. And the way it's been addressed previously is the property was actually subdivided, so the sign was independent, on an independent parcel from the property. And, but that's, I don't, yeah, I don't...
Does the new code affect that in any way?
New code, no, it doesn't affect it. It still would become an on-premise sign at that point.
Okay.
Okay, councilmember Mangum?
How do we differentiate between a mural or painted sign and graffiti?
So graffiti is typically something that the property owner didn't put on their building. And it's something that is, in my opinion, would be a nuisance thing. A painted sign is something that's not advertising. And so the definition of a sign is very clear in our code of what a sign is. And it's, so a mural isn't depicting any sort of advertisement. But we do allow for painted signs. And that's one of the issues we ran into with the old code, is that we were very restrictive of painted signs and how big they could be. And we required a licensed sign contractor to apply a painted sign. And so it was, it was, got to be a situation where we had a lot of businesses that were upset over their desire to put a painted sign on their buildings. And so we tried to address that in the code to make it easier for property owners to paint a sign on their building. Now, a mural, we have a definition of what a mural is, and it's more of art that is associated with, that's not associated with any sort of advertisement. And art is to the eye of the beholder, right? And so if someone who might feel the graffiti they painted on their building is art, that's not for us to determine.
So content-wise, we're not putting any restrictions on content, correct?
We try very hard to not be content-based. And the law does let us differentiate between on-premise and off-premise that is allowable.
So when we talk content, let's say, let's say it's obscene content. Do we have the right to then address that and say, this content is not appropriate? And let's say, let's say Hayden paints some mural.
Can't believe you, Hayden.
Sorry. Let's say Linda, let's say Linda, let's say Linda paints something. And it's obscene, so do, but she says, A, or Jared says, it's a mural, right? Can we then address that, or is it just...
And I think that's a good question for Jared to answer, but I think state statute is very clear as to what is considered obscene and what isn't. And so we would have to apply the standards of the state statute to that.
Okay. So then, my last thing is...
For Jared.
That's a great answer.
Good answer. So my next question is, with mobile signs, there are trucks that have like little A-frames and they'll drive through town and whatnot.
Yeah.
Does any of that apply here with any of this code?
We don't regulate vehicle signs. It's not part of the sign code.
Okay, so there's a truck that has, you know, the screens on the side, and it's been parked out front of my bank several times with my lovely face on it, right? Does that qualify? Because it's still a mobile sign and we're not regulating, does that still qualify with not being regulated? But since it's parked in my location, does it now qualify as another on-premise sign? Or, like, how does that look?
That's a good question. Technically, it is, in the current code, it would not be regulated because it is a vehicle sign.
Okay, so, but in the new code, will it apply?
It would not have.
Does it say something about electronic message centers not allowed in vehicles?
It does.
Say it again.
So you can't have electronic message centers on vehicles.
You can or can't?
You cannot.
Cannot.
In the new code.
In the new code.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to put a wrap on your vehicle and park it out in front of your building, you're more than welcome to.
Okay, councilmember Nichols?
Have we explored alternatives to the EMC illumination curfew? And if so, what might they be?
So the alternative to the curfew is basically what we have, where it's enforcing the standards we have for dimming. And the difficulty is in the enforcement of that. And that's why we felt the best way to address it is through the curfew component. And that just is easy to address because if it's on, you're not compliant; if it's off, you are compliant. And it's a real easy way to address that. And I just want to be clear, it is only for electronic message centers. So if someone has a wall sign, they can leave their sign on if they want. No one's saying that they can't advertise their property with a wall sign or a pole sign. This is only electronic message centers.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Mangum?
So, we're pushing to get this done, I was going to say quickly, but this hasn't been a quick process.
This is not quickly.
At all. So, but we also have the comprehensive plan that we're trying to roll out also. So delaying this, does it delay the comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan's already been approved. We are through the comprehensive. This is, this is different than the separate and comprehensive plan.
Timeframe-wise, how long was that survey out? Because we've heard a lot of people complain that the survey didn't, wasn't good, didn't work out right.
Oh, he says two months.
Two months.
Two months, so it was out for two months.
Yes.
So people were able to take the survey within that two months. That's, that's an answer.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, we've heard a number of times, we need to take some time, we have two different options here, there's some other things out there. I'm going to, we'll put this on our work session for next week. And so I'm just informing the clerk now, I'm three days late to get it on the agenda, but we'll figure that out. But we will put it on there so that you can consider what has been said. We can have a discussion next Thursday, that work session, if you'd like to attend that, would be next Thursday, starts at 9:00 AM. I'll tell you, we won't put you until toward the end of it, so if you're not here at 9:00 AM, you're probably not going to miss it. But I wouldn't be past 10:30, maybe 11 o'clock to be here. Don't hold me to those numbers because if for some reason the city council isn't very talkative, and we buzz through them, then we'll get to the sign code. Now, I haven't seen the city council not be very talkative, so I would assume that you'd be okay getting here around 10 to 10:30-ish. At that time, I do want to remind you, counsel, the public hearing is closed, the public's had an opportunity to speak. We can only consider, and we will only consider what was, has been presented up to this point. And we need to have a discussion there. We can beat this horse to death. I can guarantee we can have a discussion for the next 15 years on putting a good sign code together. And we will never have everybody say it's a good sign code. And so we will, hopefully, we need to do our best to make that happen. And I would encourage you to, if you have any questions, anything you want to make sure, speaking to the audience now that the council hears next Thursday, please get with our planning and zoning, or our planning department with those questions, and that would be Brent or Jennifer, so that they can represent some of those if we have not seen here. But we will, as a city council, can only consider what we've got to this point. And so with that, we are, we've closed the public hearing. Thank you for being here. This is not an easy thing. I think it was Frank said that, no, it was Kent said that, I'm the third mayor, I'm telling you, it's, he said, I'm the third mayor, he's been in front of me, he didn't say he's been in front of me four times on a sign code issue. For some reason, planning and zoning, the planning department brings up sign codes every year, every time we hire a new planner. This is the initiation thing, and quite frankly, it's hell for the city council to go through. So I'm going to put a moratorium on that after this for a while. It's ridiculous for us to do this all the time. So thank you for being here right now. We do have some more of the meeting to go through, but we've been here for almost, well, two solid hours, so we're going to take a break for about five to 10 minutes, and then we'll be back to finish the city council meeting. Thank you very much. And thank you for joining us after our break. It's been a long, long night, and so hopefully we can move this along from this point forward. But we'll move to agenda item number nine.
Ten.
Ten. Let's not do nine again. Number 10, see? It's been a long night. Agenda item number 10, short plot application, Dykman Commercial Park. Council may wish to approve a short plot application submitted by Dykman Realty LLC, represented by Chris Street of HLE Engineering, to subdivide 5.76 acres, more or less, into four industrial lots. The property is located at 6284 South Fifth Avenue. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards of Pocatello Municipal Code, assuming compliance with conditions listed in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve agenda item 10, short plot application for Dykman Commercial Park, meeting all acceptable conditions and complying with municipal code, according to agenda item 10. And that's it.
Okay.
I almost said amen.
I got a very hesitant second because he wasn't sure the motion was done. We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Paulson, and I'm sure it was more energetic than what it sounded. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
And the word "period" is very effective, just saying.
Ron, thank you for being here all night long. Appreciate that. We'll move to agenda item 11, is peace pole installation permission request, Centennial Rotary Club. Council may wish to approve a request by the Centennial Rotary Club to allow placement of a peace pole on city property inside a park or green space, subject to approval of the Parks and Recreation Director. Parks and Recreation Department has recommended approval of the request. There is no cost to the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the peace pole installation permission request from Centennial Rotary Club as outlined in agenda item number seven. I mean, sorry, 11. I don't know where I got that from.
You want to go back again. We've got a, we've got a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, upon the approval given by the Parks and Rec Director, or Parks and Rec Department, will we be, will the council be informed of where it's going prior to, or?
I'll have her approve it and then let us know what, where that's been approved.
Thank you.
Yep. So we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, Airport Master Plan Adoption and Resolution. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and adopt the airport master plan and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the airport master plan, or adopt the master plan and resolution, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents. Period.
Second.
That was a solid period, so we got the more energetic, confident second on that one. So we have a motion by Mangum and a second by Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Bus Conveyance Acceptance from Idaho Transportation Department Public Transit. Council may wish to accept staff recommendations and approve acceptance of 1, 2021 Freightliner Gavil Medium Duty Bus, and 3, Gillig 2007, 2014, and 2015 Heavy Duty Buses from Idaho Transportation Department, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Staff anticipates the vehicles will be utilized for a minimum of five years. If approved, the buses will be used for system-wide fixed route and commuter services. There are no additional requirements for acceptance of the conveyance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Councilmember Nichols?
I move to approve agenda item number 13 as listed.
Second.
So, thank you, we have a motion by Nichols and a second by Mangum. On our agenda, it says a 2020 Freightliner, but it is actually a 2021. And so, thank you for that. We have a motion by Nichols, a second by Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Paulson? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, On Call Engineering Services Agreement for Well Number Seven, Task Order Number 5A, Keller Associates. Council may wish to accept staff recommendations and approve a task order number 5A, well number 17, to Highland Golf Course under the existing On Call Engineering Services Agreement between the city and Keller Associates in the amount of $378,490, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Since no one else is going to fight, I move that we approve the On Call Engineering Service Agreement for Well Number 17, Task Order Number 5A, with Keller Associates as outlined in agenda item number 14, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Lurick and a second by Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, items from the audience, and we have nobody signed up for audience, from the audience. And so thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you to the staff. It has been a long night and a long day. Appreciate your work and everything you've done. With that, we are adjourned.